Good evening and welcome to the June 23 Committee of the Hole Meeting. Please join us to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll Club of the Members, Councilor Gensio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Grino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermio. Is absent, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First item on tonight's agenda is the Council Order 250160. That is the FY 26 revolving funds table.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council. Before you tonight is the fiscal year 2026 departmental revolving funds as prescribed by Mass General Law. It is the city council that sets the maximum spending for these funds. I did attach a copy of the law in there for you and a detail of all the accounts. We don't spend any money unless that money is there, so this just sets the maximum amount we could spend for each of those funds for fiscal year 2026 and happy to try to answer any questions on that.
City councils. Councilor Gensio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Viskey, I was looking through the revolving funds account, the Haas Wellness Center, where that money is deposited from memberships or what have you. Is that acting like a revolving account?
So, yes. So, right now, we're accounting for that within the special grant account for the ARPA funds. I was going to bring a new revol-- I have several new revolving funds to add in fiscal year 2026 due to the budget and some of the other things that were going on. I didn't have enough time to prepare that, so I'm gonna get that on the July council agenda so that we can-- because that takes an ordinance change to actually change that, so it'll require public hearing, but we will be adding and deleting some revolving accounts. One of them would be a new departmental revolving account for the Haas Health and Wellness.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other city councils? No? Thank you. Do we have to take a call? Recommendation to adopt the income tables of 2026? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Council Order 25161, FY 26, water and sewer rates.
Mr. Viskey.
Good evening again. Yes, this 9.7% water and sewer rate increase is needed due to the fact that over the past several years, we've used one-time revenues such as the ARPA funds and stabilization funds to stabilize a three-year rate increase of 4.25%, which expired in fiscal year 2025. So, without the use of one-time revenues to actually have the water and sewer fund be self-sufficient, I am recommending a 9.7% increase in the water and sewer rates, unfortunately, but I'm hoping that this is a one-time adjustment reconciliation that'll bring us back to what would be a lot more reasonable rate increases going forward, but this is kind of needs to be adjusted so that our revenues and expenditures equal each other without the use of one-time revenue. So, unfortunately, that's a situation we're in and happy to try to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. Any councils? Councilor Gensio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Viskey. So, obviously, that's a large increase, and like you say, you're just hoping this is a one-time large increase. Has there been any thought to taking any money out of the water and sewer stabilization account to kind of curtail this a little?
I mean, we've done that the last three fiscal years, whether it be retained earnings or the stabilization account, or when we actually used $3 million of the ARPA funds over the last three years. You might recall in 2022, we voted that 4.25% rate for three years, but when you put that rate in with the expenses, it forced us to use one-time revenues. As a matter of fact, we used $2 million of stabilization fund this year, which, you know, that's bringing our stabilization fund down to about $3.5 million, so I'm cautious to use any more of that stabilization fund. We do have a half a million dollar in there for this year as contingency, because a lot of times when you raise water and sewer rates, a lot of people start to conserve water a little more, so we may not hit that math the way I figure, so we do have some contingency in there. I'm not gonna go forward and request that money for 2026 yet. I want to kind of see how fiscal year 2026 plays out for the first four or five months when we get close to setting the tax rate. But, yeah, I mean, it certainly can be done, but we've used so much over the last three years, and you might recall, our retained earnings was only $70,000, $80,000 this year, so we're really at the point where revenues and expenditures are kind of break even, so I'm a little wary of continuing that practice, and that's why we've kind of put this rate increase off through COVID and some of the tough times. We wanted to kind of stabilize those rates, but without using one-time revenues, this is my best guess on what we need to be to make revenues equal expenditures on the water and sewer enterprise fund.
Okay, thank you for your explanation. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rich, thanks so much. I had a few residents, you know, like you said, unfortunately, it's going up 9.7%. I had a few people ask me if it's going up 9% this year, it's gonna go up 8% this year, and it's just gonna, you know, or 9.5, you know, 10%, it's just gonna keep going up. Can you talk a little bit about why it goes up? What causes this to go up to that extent?
Sure. In this particular case, quite frankly, it's more to make up for the use of one-time revenues. Again, over the last three fiscal years, we've used approximately $3 million a year to have our 4.25% rate increase stay at that, and short of using one-time revenues, again, it's-- the user rates brings in the money to pay for the direct and indirect cost of that. I mean, the majority of the funds go towards our water and sewer assessment and our debt service, but quite frankly, I can't say that those went up 9.7%. This is more a factor of using one-time revenues and actually getting out of that practice, but my hope is that once we do 9.7% over the next fiscal years, we'll have revenues equal expenses, and it should go up at that natural rate, hopefully 3% or 4% like it typically does.
Thank you. So, the one-time revenue is the main cause.
Yeah, there's no one-time revenue being used in fiscal year 26, and that's the first time we haven't used one-time revenue since fiscal year 2022.
And this will hopefully catch us up to speed?
That's my hope.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rich, I know there's been controversy with the water saves that you put on the hose, and you save water by watering your garden. I don't know what they're called. Are you still--
The outside water meters?
The water meters, yes. Are you still gonna use them?
We've eliminated the practice of using the manual deduct meters that you hook on to your hose and then hook on to your outside meter. There is a program that you can still get a deduct meter, but it's required to be hard-piped in so that, again, some people could hook that up to their washing machine, could hook it up to their house in New Hampshire and kind of manipulate that system. So, in order to ensure that there's no shrinkage in using that system, the deduct meters are required to be hard-piped in, hard to your hose outside per se if you're watering your garden or your pool, and I believe there are programs for seniors to get free permits and such to accomplish that, but we still offer it. We just don't offer that mobile deduct meter. It has to be hard-piped into your system.
Okay, because I know there was-- last year, they didn't know, they didn't have a timeline of when it was gonna end and when it wasn't gonna end, but the other thing, too, is this, when you hook it up to your hose inside your house, it's very costly. Right?
I'm not sure. No, I mean--
I heard it was very costly.
The purpose of it is to deduct the sewer charges from it.
It's very, very costly.
To install.
To install it, yes.
I can't speak to how much it costs to install. I can probably defer that to somebody else, but plumbers aren't cheap, I suppose. I suppose you're right there.
I heard it was thousands of dollars. That's what I heard.
I can't speak to it because I haven't had it done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Almost 10%. That's a lot of money. What's the average water bill?
I'd have to try to get back to you. There's an MWRA survey that comes out, and I can get you that information. I can't off the top of my head.
This is gonna kill people on a fixed income. I mean, this is a big increase. I understand how it happened, but it's gonna be painful.
Yeah, that's kind of why we were deferring it for a while, but it's-- at some point, you gotta reconcile and catch up, and--
It's a lot of money.
Yeah, none of us are pleased with it, Councilor, for sure.
I know. Lot of money. I don't have any suggestions except that, you know, and the people that use the deduct meters, and I know, listen, there are a lot of scam artists out there, and they were taking it to their summer homes and hooking it up, and so there's no way we can use that plastic meter anymore, but it is an awful lot of money to install a hard meter. It's probably about $1,000 in most instances, and I've done it, so, and people close to me have done it. It takes a long time to get your money back from the deduct meter unless you're a fanatic with your lawn and your water, and, you know, 10 times a day. It's all recovering that money, you know, for the deduct meter, it's expensive, but I understood that, and I understood how people were-- those meters were never a good idea the way they were set up. It was too easy.
I do know that we're setting up a home improvement program for seniors that this may be an eligible expense that they may be able to get reimbursed for.
Oh, wonderful.
I can defer to the--
That'd be great.
Elder Services Director on the details, but that may be an option for the seniors.
So, it's not only bad news of a 10% water increase, you've got some good news, too, so that's-- I like that.
Well, I think it's, now that you're bringing it up, it just kind of dawned on me that that may be a good--
Absolutely.
--good program for seniors to get a water meter, install a deduct meter.
Yeah, especially the ones that have a big lawn and they, you know, they're barely paying their taxes because they're on a fixed income.
Yeah, swimming pools, too, so, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rada, all I can say is I am getting croaked. My phone is ringing off the hook from senior citizens that own their homes, saying I cannot afford a 9.5% increase in water. It's already higher than I can afford now. I am gonna have to sell my home and move out of the city and rent. This is not right. We have to do something to protect. How much can we really reduce this?
I wouldn't reduce it at all, but again, that's my recommendation, so--
It is, sir, you know, but unfortunately, I'm not happy with it.
I'll just say that any reduction that's made when we run fiscal year 26, if we have a revenue deficit, the Department of Revenue is gonna require us to raise that in the subsequent year tax rate, so we're gonna have to pay it one way or another, but this is my best guess to bring us back to par on revenues and expenses, so--
Well, just a little-- I have a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna.
They-- Rich answered my question, because I was gonna ask what if it doesn't pass tonight if we vote no, so that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, again, we submit our-- all our financials, we do, I call it the fake budget tonight because we're voting all the money tonight, but ultimately, by the end of November, early December, I have to submit all this stuff to the Department of Revenue, and they determine whether we have a balanced budget and whether we have to take action to get a tax rate set, so if they see that there's a revenue deficit, they'll require us to raise it as part of the tax rate set and process, so that's kind of the remedy. You know, I wish I could say that it could only be seven or eight, but again, the math comes out to the 9.7%, and short of any other kind of windfalls of money, there's really no way to raise any other revenue than through user rates, so, you know, the consent decree and stuff like that, kind of, and hopefully that goes away and it stabilizes it, but like I said, I can't even blame MWRA this year because our increases were pretty much 3% for MWRA. This is just kind of reconciling us to get us off of paying for recurring costs with one-time revenue.
We saw these raises 20 years ago when they were trying to clean the ocean. We saw these high water bills. I mean, I don't think they're gonna be as high as now, but they were very high, but at least you can see a difference in the ocean. We've got seals coming back, we've got whales, we've got everything coming back because the ocean's so clean. It's just, we got to see what we were paying for. We're not getting to see what we're paying for. We're just paying for it.
Well, it's hard to see the infrastructure under the ground, but we do have, you know, almost 100% of our sewer lines have been realigned and done. We're doing water main replacements throughout the city. We're doing leak detection all over the place, so it's not as sexy as a new building or a new school, you know, a new fire truck, but the city of Revere has totally revamped all its infrastructure over the last 15 years, and hopefully the consent decree ends, and we can just deal with normal increases in assessments and operating costs, but it's tough, and I will say that this is my eighth year here, and this is the first time that we had to come before you with an increase that high. We've had some years where we had 0% increases, so we had a pretty good run, but we knew it was gonna be reckoning time, and that's unfortunately where I am today here.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hermio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through to our CFO, I have a question. Where were these one-time revenues we're subsidizing these bills from?
We used $3 million of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. We used approximately $3 million of our water and sewer stabilization account and approximately $3 million of our water and sewer retained earnings, which is the water and sewer free cash that's certified by the Department of Revenue, so those three.
ARPA, water and sewer stabilization. What was the last one? Sorry?
Retained earnings, which is the water and sewer free cash.
In the last four years, in the previous administration, and the year and a half of this administration, or actually, two and a half years, I guess, two years? No, two, because he got in, you know, yeah, I mean. Was there any conversations about tiering this increase in by subsidizing with the ARPA money so that we'd have a longer runway on this? I know that other cities did it. I know when I worked in Lawrence, this was something that we did. We tiered, we used ARPA money to tier the rates, so--
Well, we essentially used $3 million to not necessarily tier the rates, but stabilize the rates, so we adopted a three-year rate structure at 4.25% for fiscal year '23, '24, and '25, and that was attained by partially by using those ARPA funds, but we didn't tier them per se. I think in '26, there has to be a lot more discussion on whether we go to a tiered rate system, and, you know, other things like monthly billing and stuff might help with cash flow and such, but certainly those have to be researched. I think MWRA prefers us to look at a tiered system, but again, some people will save money and some people will lose money, because ultimately, if we have to raise $33 million, we have to raise $33 million, so tiering them is just gonna redistribute how those bills would be delivered, but certainly something we're gonna look into because some people who use small amount of money and water and conserve, they may pay a lesser rate, but the ones who use more would have to pay a higher rate, because again, we have to raise $33 million, let's say, and it doesn't matter how the rates are, the bottom line still has to be that $33 million.
Help me understand, for FY '23, '24, and '25, we did do an increase or no?
We voted in 2022 as part of the budget process, a three-year rate structure, which brought the rates up 4.25% each year. So, that was voted in '22, so that's why you didn't see me over here in '24 and '25, because that was voted at the council in 2022.
And that was 4.5?
4.25, four and a quarter.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Viskey, can you speak to the consent decree just a little bit in terms of how we're being impacted by that now, and if it does end, or what you foresee it, when you foresee it ending, and how we'll be impacted by it at that point in time? Thank you.
I would honestly defer to Nick Reichstrom or maybe Chris Charamella on that.
Hello, councilors. So, me and Nick have been working on the-- well, Nick has been working on the consent decree for the past 15 years, 10 years?
Close to that.
Yeah, and right now, we're at the point where we've, I think it's 98% of our sewer system is now aligned, and after this, the next step of the consent decree is to conveyance, so it's upsizing existing sewer lines to redirect the flow so we can mitigate SSOs within our community. The major holdup back and forth with the consent decree and the Clean Water Act is the level, the acceptable SSO is zero, so you cannot have any SSO. So, we've obviously been in talks with EPA and the DEP as how we're trying to move forward since we can't have an acceptable level at all of SSOs. So, I believe the consent decree as it is now is 2038.
Is that correct?
I'm sorry, 2035, and at that point, we will hit our, what we've expressed, we would already commit within the consent decree that was signed in the years past. I don't know if you have anything to add, Nick?
So, Chris has it right. We amended the consent decree to move it out further to make it financially more palatable for the city, so right now, under our current amendment, it does take us through 2035. We are essentially finished with the rehab portion of the sewer system. What we're focusing now on is some of the bigger conveyance projects, but also what you've seen, some of the smaller inflow removal programs, which includes some pump removal and rerouting, you know, discharges to the system that don't belong, that are violations of the Clean Water Act. So, you'll see some kind of reduction in that regard, where we're not hitting the rehab button anymore, but it does bring us still out to the mid-2030s.
Please understand, we are working as best we can to get us out of this consent decree. It's a difficult hoop to jump through, but we are trying.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haas.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. This is-- this question's for Rich. Rich, I'm not sure if you can even answer this or if it's even legal, but would the city ever consider a different rate for residents over 65 or seniors? Would there ever be like a break like that where it's not, they're not seeing the full 9.7% hike, but they're seeing, say, like a 5 or a 6?
I don't know of any law that allows for that, but I can certainly do some research and find out.
Great, thank you. And I also know that the city has the work-off abatement program.
Yeah, we do have that. We have some programs within the city, but yeah, I'm not sure if there's any laws that allow us to charge different rates to seniors, but I can't answer that for sure, but it's worth asking, for sure.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Councilor Haas asked one of my questions, but my other one is where there's gonna be such a large increase in the bill at 9%, does the water and sewer work-off, does that expand at all, or does it stay the same? Is there an adjustment to that work-off?
I'd have to check exactly how that is voted. I don't know if that was a council, a city ordinance as such, but I'm sure it's something we can research. I don't know that there's any fast and set rule on it's maxed out or anything, but I, again, I can, I got some questions to answer, I believe, but yeah, that's a great question, and I can find out for you.
I appreciate it, and I know no one wants to be doing this right now. I know the mayor doesn't want to be doing this, but it's like the, with the dissent decree, like the people have been hearing, oh, it's coming to an end, it's coming to an end, and now all of a sudden, it's always 20, 30 something, and we're gonna raise it 9%. It seems like there's always something coming at the resident, and we all hear it, so anything that might be able to be done to help even the seniors would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, you know, again, the tiered system might be the best option because those seniors, let's assume they use a lot less water than a family of six or seven, so that tiered rate system might be the best option to try to, you know, level or give the seniors some discounts, assuming they live by themselves or they don't use a lot of water and such, so, but I can assure you, we'll look at all the options.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Councilor McKenna.
So, I know that we talked before that you're not gonna, you're gonna get bids other than CDM Smith to, you know, work on the sewers, so am I right? You're getting other bids?
We actually did put it out to bid, and CDM did win the bid, and they were substantially less than they were, so we actually did do that, and to the extent that we're gonna do that every year, I would defer to Nick and Chris again, but that did happen.
I think we should get them in office.
Hold on, hold on.
So, and Councilor, when you would initiate-- pardon me, thank you for hearing us. When you initiated that, you asked that we actually put it out to bid because it hadn't been for some number of years, it's just been re-awarded. Guess what happened? The price came down. So, because of your actions and because of the council requesting more, they did come to us with a better price, and it created a level of competition, so it just goes to show that probably in the next year or so, we'll do it again, and we've also asked a few of the competitors to do a little peer review on some of the work and scope. If they don't do the work, they just do the project design and oversight, so, but good question, Councilor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And can I get a favorable recommendation on the 2026 water and sewer rates? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. And for the 2026 budget presentation, Councilor Cogliandro.
So, the idea is to have any of the councilors ask questions. Looks like we have a lot of the department heads here, the mayor, the CFO. This would be the time, I know the subcommittee is only five of us, but we had a very efficient process, and there were a lot of great questions asked, and I hope everybody got a chance to not only review the budget, but the two hours and two and a half hours' worth of budget meetings we have instead of four days' worth of it, so just open the floor to questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any councilors have any questions? No? Hearing none? No. Councilor Gensio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have like a statement about the Haas Health and Wellness Center. I know last year's budget hearings, when the number got to 1,800, we would be at full cost recovery. I got a statement from Mr. Perella today, and there was, I think, 2,100 active members, and I think at budget hearings, you had said we're looking to appropriate about a quarter of a million dollars this year. That money, I think you had indicated is kind of like a failsafe, so are you confident that as the fiscal year goes on, we may be able to save some of that money, and it could fall to the bottom line at the end of this fiscal year?
I will, I'll have more data on that, probably for the July meeting, once we close the books on June 30th, to see where we ultimately end up, and certainly the appropriation could be the revenue, the appropriation of last resort if we do keep up enrollment, and we're really pleased with the way that's been going, but we'll certainly look to use all the money in a revolving fund or otherwise before we tap into those appropriations. So, I guess the short answer would be yes, that we could turn that back or redistribute it if we don't need it, but again, not knowing exactly where we're gonna be as this Haas Health and Wellness Center continues to get momentum, we're hoping that it's a full cost recovery, and we may not have to use that, but that remains to be seen, and I will have, by the time we meet in July, I'll be able to tell you where we ended up at the fiscal year on June 30th, and probably have a better rant for you then.
Okay, because I know last year with 1,800, was it, do we have a new magic number, or is--
I don't have the magic number right off the top of my head. We did adjust the membership rates, so those went up a little bit, you know, some people leave, some people come in, but I will try to hone in on a more specific magic number for the July meeting.
Okay, and then at some point, that account will be-- Okay, and then at some point, that account will be a revolving account?
Yeah, I'm going to propose that we create a new revolving account at the next meeting that will have to go to a public care, and then be ordained as a revolving fund. So, yes, definitely going to be for '26.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city Counselors? Okay. Will any city Counselors be presenting any cuts to this year's budget?
If I may, Mr. President.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Mr. President, you know, everybody works hard here, and we all try to keep everybody happy with what we get financially. And, believe it or not, my target is the school department. You know, as I mentioned before, we had the superintendent up here, and coming out of our budget is, I think I saw $8 million for transportation for the kids. And, I think that's a little high, and I think the school committee and the school department should look into that a little deeper. And, to help make that happen, I'm going to propose that we deduct from the transportation, which is part of our budget, not the school department budget. It comes out of our money, a million dollars out of the transportation portion.
Yes, absolutely, Counselor.
Can I just make one clarification on that?
Just let me clarify one second. So, what was that number, Counselor? $1 million. Mr. Viskey.
Just to speak to Counselor Nowosowski's point, even though it is a cost that is borne by the city with regard to student transportation, if there was a cut that was being proposed to that, it would actually be a cut to the appropriation to the school department for a million dollars, because the Schedule 19 actually works those figures into it. So, we start with the net school spending number, and then we do our additions and subtractions, and we get to a net number. So, theoretically, if you're going to cut a million dollars from transportation, you would, it would be a cut to the school budget to a million dollars.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Mr. President, through you to the council. The school committee, if you were watching the last meeting, they made a number of sizable changes to the transportation costs. They started at $15 million. So, just to give everyone an understanding, of the $15 million to transport our students, approximately $7.7 million is for special education transportation. That you can't cut, that's required. So, $7.7 million right out the gate is untouchable. There is a few million dollars in reimbursements from the state, as you know, if a child has to be transported to another district, if there's a special needs person that has an ambulatory need. Those are some pretty serious needs, but also, it's very high expenses. Some students, one student could cost up to $100,000, one student. So, looking at that, there really wasn't, there were some opportunities. We are looking to see if we can work with other municipalities to share, ride-share, meaning if a student's leaving Revere, going through Saugus, picking a student up, and then getting to their end school, wherever it may be, Beverly, Wilmington, et cetera. But, there's a state requirement, you can only be on the bus or transportation for so long. So, it's hard to navigate. What we did do is we looked at the unrequited transportation and made significant changes in that as a school committee, about $1.7 million. So, I'll just say this, I am very much for fiscal prudence, and I don't want to spend money where we don't need to. But, to offer another, an additional cut on top of the $1.7 million may actually go against what we are required to transport, and they'll just have to take that money from somewhere else. And, it will result in, it will result in probably staffing cuts at the school department. So, I'm just saying, I appreciate that. Maybe if we want to work over, you know, from today to next year, to the following year's school budget, and revisit transportation again, and find ways to create redundancy, efficiencies, then that would be a good idea to work together and collaboratively with the school committee. But, if you just did a $1 million cut today, there'll be layoffs tomorrow. And it won't, it probably won't change this transportation, because we pretty much took the transportation in the school district to the state minimum, where we were a little bit overly generous over the last many years, but transportation costs have gone out of control, as you know. And also, to note, I personally spoke to the inspector general, and I also personally spoke to other districts, and asked the state legislature to investigate these major transportation companies. And I believe the state legislators are going to be earmarking $250,000 in supplemental budget money to investigate these large transportation companies for collusion and bid rigging. So, I hope that that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor actually answered some of my questions. I watched all the Ways and Means Subcommittee meetings. I know how much you all agonized over these cuts, and frankly, I think the M7 cards are, they're an alternative, but I worry about safety for the children. I would almost rather them, you know, not take public transportation. But, my real question was, what we're spending is what we're required to spend. And the other question I had that you answered is, does this really come out of transportation, or is it a bigger, broader line item?
Mr. President, through you to the Counselor. We spend, because of the lottery process, which again, creates an additional burden on transportation, we are going to have further lottery potential, changes to the lottery system over the next few years in phase, in a phased approach. That'll then, again, further reduce transportation costs. But, it's hard to tell a student right now that selected a middle school and has to go across the city through the lottery, oh, by the way, now we're not going to offer you transportation. So, that would be, it would be kind of a, you know, a little bit of a thumb in the eye, we just don't want to do that. But, at some point, if we're phasing out the lottery over the next three years, and that's going to be probably voted on next year in the school committee, that, then that'll, again, reduce some of the burden on costs, and give kids more of an opportunity to walk to school and find safe pathways. But, yes, pretty much, we spend now, we're getting much closer to the bare minimum we're required to spend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Mr. Mayor, the M7 cards, when will those be put into effect?
So, the, Dr. Kelly mentioned it was $50,000 per middle school, and I want to say it was either 100 or 200 for the high school level. Those will be available for the coming school year, and the students that were formerly eligible for transportation will have first dibs, and then after that, it'll go to a first-come, first-served. Now, just so you know, you, everyone, for the crazy amount of money we're spending in high school transportation, only 132 kids took the bus. Only 132 kids out of the 2,100. And, of the 132, we all know that you would see some of those buses after school half-full, because if they had after-school programming or sports, they weren't using the bus in the right home. So, we were paying for empty buses in a lot of situations. Now, yes, I'm not saying that 132 kids aren't going to have to figure it out, but we're going to be able to supplement that with the Charlie Card, which can be used on the weekend. It's a monthly payment that's $30 a month, and so they can use it for after-school jobs. They can use it for a lot more than just to and from school. So, I think it's actually a net benefit to the students and the families.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, do you happen to know how many buses Revere owns?
Revere owns a, I don't know, do we own any large, we might own a few of the large buses, then we have a lot of the smaller 12 and 14-passenger vehicles, but not many. Our fleet's very small, and they're all leased, but it's not, it's not very large.
Do you know how many buses we lease?
We're leasing about 19.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that is now coming down to, it came down significantly. Just the high school was three, and then the middle schools and some other additional was a few more bus routes. So, I think we took it down close to nine buses.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm told that we offer transportation that other cities and towns don't. And, has that been looked at, and we, why are we one of the only towns that do, or cities or towns that offer this transportation? It's millions of dollars. And, you know, I know a lot of people ask me this question, and so, can you help me?
Sure. Mr. President, through you to the Counselor. For many years, Revere has been very generous in their transportation offerings. You know, Malden, for instance, eliminated all non-required district transportation 10 years ago. I spoke to the mayor just last year. I said, how do you manage this transportation spike? He goes, I just don't, we don't do it. We only, we only transport what we're required to. And Everett, a lot of the surrounding communities just don't do it, because they can't afford it, and it's tough to pass on that burden. But, it's also, as mentioned, 132 kids for over $360,000. When the buses were costing us $40,000, $50,000 a year to run, that's one thing. Now that they're 117 a year to run for two-way transportation, it's not, it's, you know, you might as well just give a kid $1,000 and say, find your way to school. Because, 132 kids for $330,000, $350,000, do the math, right? You could hand them checks, and you'd be better off. Now, I'm not saying we do that, but we are, unfortunately, because of the, these bus companies are pricing themselves out of the market. So, because of their price gouging, we have to, we have to make these decisions. So, I say shame on the bus companies, and it's just too bad, because you're putting yourself out of business eventually.
Well, I mean, you know, we all want to be generous here, but, you know, at some point, we have to say, we've got to bite the bullet here. We can't be offering this, because we can't pay for it. And I can't put a senior out of their house, because we're paying for transportation that's not required. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So, currently on the floor, we have a motion to cut a million. Do you want to still cut that million dollars, Counselor? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Shall the Committee of the Whole on a motion of Counselor Nowosowski reduce the school department, the Revere Public Schools per Schedule 19 budget by $1 million? Counselor Agenzio.
No.
No, Counselor Cogliano?
No.
No, Counselor Janino?
No.
No, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
No.
No, Counselor Haas?
No.
No, Counselor Hermio?
No.
No, Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Silvestri?
No.
No, the reduction fails.
Okay. Do we have any other cuts to the budget anywhere else? City Counselors. Counselor McKenna?
Yes, I'd just like to say that, being on the Ways and Means Committee, I thought the budget was very lean, and I thought there was no waste. And I congratulate you and Rich Viskey for putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. So... So, we got a favorable recommendation for the 2026 budget as presented. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much.
And that closes business. Ms. Kay, see you at 6:00.